She is taking a diminished. I signed up to speak at the beginning of the past at school district.
Fine.
So long to you. Very much. I suppose so. How can I help you? I don't see how it works. No. Hi, Heidi.
I suppose that was your son? Okay.
He's about two feet tall.
She was like six years.
No. I can't believe we are raised. That was all summer.
You want it now?
A little bit.
There's always something to do.
I had to pay like eighty percent of the same student.
We're going to be helping with your project. I know that feeling. We're not planning on just having.
How are you?
This summer? Stop after the beach. That's some good water. I mean, I know. You're right.
Yes.
Where was she? Hey, how are you? Good, how are you? But I needed a vacation. Like, I would say really difficult. And like, I just spent like two days. I'm like, I'm just going to sit here. I saw it. Why? We just have people. She wanted to take six parts, but they just spent. It was everything. Yeah. Remember, we need to go back when they get to ask you about staying. You need to go back when they get in the car. Actually, not feel. Part of my tour, I see part of the.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this October or August fourteenth. Business meeting in order. Roll call, please.
Dr. Campley.
Here.
Mr. Doer.
Here.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett.
Here.
Mr. Fountain.
Here.
Mr. Keenan.
Here.
Dr. Kohler.
Here.
Mrs. Mayers.
Here.
Mr. Saylor.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and infinite.
The mission of the Perkuman Valley School District is to cultivate an inclusive community of learners, empowered to grow intellectually, socially, and emotionally. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Any objections? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The agenda is approved. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes from June twelfth and August seventh as presented. Is there a second? Any objections? Seeing none, motion is approved. And we'll move on to a special recognition. And I will hand the floor over to Mrs. Mayers.
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to recognize a couple different programs and many students and some faculty. The first that we're looking at is summer interns. Each summer, a select group of students commits themselves to working for the school district as part of the operations and technology teams under the leadership of Mr. Fabrizio. He's the Director of Operations and Mr. Ganesh, who's the Chief Information Officer. The student interns contribute to the work that needs to be completed in the areas of maintenance, custodial, and technology. The students listed below dedicated themselves to working for the school district during summer 2023, and I will get to their names in just a few minutes. The operations team interns completed cleaning of buildings, painting, reorganizing property, and moving furniture and other classroom items in preparation for deep cleaning or shifts in room assignments. The team of dedicated technology summer interns took on a series of impactful projects for the PVSD community. Some of their key initiatives involved collecting the technology recycling in all our district buildings, provisioning new Chromebooks for students for the new year, painting and preparing the esports space for our first ever PV High School Esports Team, and supporting the Viking Genius Bar Summer Lift Camp. Overall, the projects completed by our summer interns have made a positive difference within the district and beyond. Through their dedication and hard work, they not only improved our technological infrastructure, but also inspired some of our younger students to embrace the potential of new emerging technology. The student workers who participated on the operations team helped to prepare our buildings to be ready for staff and students. All of these student interns provided essential support during this critical period of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year preparation, and we are grateful for their efforts. Dr. Russell, superintendent, has a certificate. If you'd like to come up and get it if you're here when we call your name. Okay, and then just line up here, please. Jacob Bachelder. Kaitlyn Bricker. Mary Kate Bricker. Adam Brockett. Austin Carroll. Brady Kramer. Dylan Cruthers. Sam DeCastro. Ian DeGuzman. Dasani Foley. Evan Kenny. Evan Little. Zachary Lofton. Aaron Minnerly. Ryan Nestor. Benny Prettyman. Gabriel Rinda. Joshua Vergildy. And Andrews Ann Grilli. Thank you. And then I think we'll be taking pictures after all of the presentations.
We're going to do PV. Oh, how about if we wait? Can we do? You want to do the picture now?
No, 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 sorry. I was saying we'll do the pictures at the end of all the presentations. Is that correct? Okay. Okay, so we'll be asking you to come outside so we can take pictures. Thank you and congratulations. The second topic tonight is PV Woods, the Montgomery Award. The Montgomery Awards Program recognizes the best in planning, design, environmental sustainability, and advocacy in Montgomery County. This prestigious annual program promotes awareness of outstanding design and innovative planning in our communities by awarding successful land developments, revitalization efforts, open space enhancements, environmental sustainability, and transportation improvements. In 2017, the Montgomery County Planning Commission partnered with the Montgomery County Conservation District to add an environmental stewardship award as part of the Montgomery Awards Program. This award recognizes a project completed in the past three years that exemplifies the practices of environmental stewardship and conservation for water and soil quality. Since 1967, the program has presented 233 awards that acknowledge the outstanding efforts and commitment of communities, organizations, and professionals in achieving excellence. PV Woods, Lenape Arboretum, and Mullenberg Woods will receive the Montgomery Award on November fifteenth. The background information. PV Woods preserved seventy-six acres for conservation and environmental education while also raising awareness of the loss of natural habitats, decreasing biodiversity, and potential collapse of the ecosystem. The official announcement for PV Woods, Lenape Arboretum, and Mullenberg Woods was made on World Environment Day 2021, as the United Nations launched a UN Decade of Ecosystem Restoration on the same date. It aims to prevent, halt, and reverse the degradation of ecosystems on every continent and in every ocean. This decade of ecosystem restoration can help to end poverty, combat climate change, and prevent a mass extinction. However, it will only succeed if everyone plays a part. The UN encouraged broad-based collaborations that included indigenous peoples. Perkuman Valley School District response to this rallying cry is the development of PV Woods, Lenape Arboretum, and Mullenberg Woods over the next five to ten years. PV Woods is in partnership with Ursinus College, Penn State Extension, Life After Trauma Organization, Perkyomen Watershed Conserv-- sorry, conserv-- I need to drink water. Conservancy, Longwood Gardens, Historic Trap, and the Delaware Tribe of Indians. Ultimately, this partnership led to the creation of the Welcome Home Project, which is a historic partnership between Ursinus College, the Delaware Tribe of Indians, Perkyomen Valley School District to honor the history, culture, and legacy of the Lenape people. PV Woods' mission is to educate our students to be leaders in environmental stewardship and social justice. This includes student-led projects and initiatives from management of two arboretums to offering activities and learning opportunities for the students, faculty, and general public. We also provide two arboretums for the public to experience the awe and wonder of nature as well as learn about the Lenape people's connection to the land. Both Lenape Arboretum and Mullenberg Woods were recently accredited on September twenty-ninth, 2022 as arboretums. Perkuman Valley School District is the first public K through twelve school in Pennsylvania with an accredited arboretum. Every labeled tree includes the name of the tree in English, Latin, and the Lenape. A QR code on each label provides the pronunciation of the Lenape name as well as any available information about the tree's connection to Lenape history and culture. PVSD is the only K through twelve school in the world with two accredited arboretums. PV Woods. Pretty amazing. I agree. PV Woods was awarded the Governor's Award for Environmental Excellence for 2023. In addition, the May 2023 edition of Educational Leadership published an article about PV Woods entitled "Bringing Justice Home: A Pennsylvania School District Works to Restore the History, Culture, and Legacy of the Native People Who've Been Driven from the Land." The Pennsylvania Environmental Council's podcast, Pennsylvania Legacies, also featured an episode on PV Woods earlier this month on August fourth. So we'd like to recognize first some of the staff involved. Amy Brecht. Dr. Clune. Josh Craven. Kate Zapala. Danielle Emers. Congratulations. And the students involved. Juliana Brecht. Seamus Clune. Hannah Cox. Sam Esken. Ava Flicker. Kelsey Freed. Violet Hayman. Morgan Higgins. Sam Kohler. Rafae Manning. Kai O'Neill. Cassidy Romano. Greg Schilling. James Sonat. Gracie Strohacker. Jesse Weinberg. And Luke Wisniski. Congratulations to everyone. And we're going to take a five-minute recess and go out in the lobby and take pictures. in the lobby and take pictures.
During COVID, we were issued all free breakfasts. At Evergreen, we would go to 200 practice in the morning, and when programs ceased, we were down to about 30 or 40.
Yeah.
Comments? Hold on one second, get the timer going. We're going to move on to comments on any topic, and our first commenter will be Mr. William McGill.
Good evening. My name is William McGill. I am a resident of the Perkyemen Township. I'm a third-grade teacher at Evergreen, and I also serve as the Association President for the Teachers of Perkyemen Valley. I'm here tonight to ask you to please support the bills that are circulating in Harrisburg right now that would provide our students with free lunch. The free breakfast has already passed, so students are already eligible for that, but I would encourage you to please support the other bill that would provide them with lunch. It's a no-brainer. It doesn't cost the district anything. So that's it. Please support the bill, and let's hope it passes. Let's feed our kids.
Thank you very much. Wade Weston.
Good evening. Wade Weston, Collegeville Borough. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. There's two areas I'd like to comment on tonight. First, with regard to the position of supervisor and equity and student services. Thanks to Dr. Russell and the board for attaching the job description for this position to tonight's agenda, but with that said, the position appears to be severely limited in scope compared to the position that it replaces, that of the Coordinator of Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement. Whereas the coordinator's role was to be a leader in creating and implementing strategies to improve equity and inclusion in the district, the supervisor's remit appears mainly to only be to provide input in these areas with little authority or expectation to actually accomplish equity and inclusion goals. Additionally, the way this new job description calls out historically marginalized student groups is curious at best and requires some explanation to the community. In short, the position described is misaligned with both the previous coordinator's position and the needs of our district's diversity, equity, and inclusion policy. As a governance and oversight body, it is not the board's job to dictate to administration specifically what to do. It can be the board's job, however, to tell administration when they need to do a better job. I would urge the board in this case to do just that, to tell this administration to do a better job and develop a position that promotes the equity and inclusion goals of this district. And secondly, with regard to the resolution in support of free school lunch for all students, I'd like to join with Mr. McGill in the hope that the board will vote to support this resolution. Simply put, a hungry student is not going to be able to learn as well as a student who is well-fed. Being able to provide meals to all students supports our mission to provide education to all students. As representatives of the school district, it is entirely appropriate for this board to let our legislators in Harrisburg know that we support their efforts to provide nutritious meals for all students. Students in Pennsylvania need this legislation. Please give it your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Robert Leggett.
Good evening, Robert Leggett, Perkyemen Township. I'm going to hopefully not be too repetitive because I do agree with Mr. McGill and with Dr. Weston about both of these issues. To start off with, the resolution for the free meals for all, which would include lunch and breakfast. I commend the board, and I hope that you guys take a positive action on this. I know it's in committee right now in Harrisburg in both the Senate and the House, and doing this, passing this resolution tonight, is an important part of fulfilling your duty that is spelled out to you in Policy 11, to advocate earnestly for our students. And we've done this before in the past, passed resolutions about legislation that hasn't happened yet. We did it with unfunded mandates. We've done it with charter school reform. For something that was not an action item, just last, in April, the 23rd, we passed a resolution declaring Student Loan Month. So it's well within your providence to do this, to pass this resolution, because what we're doing is we're telling our representatives in Harrisburg, what's the will of the people? And for us, I really cannot see any downside in this. This is a plus for all of us. To me, this isn't political, even though political just means of the government. This is totally nonpartisan. This is a chance for all of us on every side to come together and do something for the good of our students. It's going to help out mostly the kids that are on the margin, that don't qualify for free meals more than anybody, but guess what? Everybody's going to get this if it passes and is enabled at the first of the year, which is currently where it is targeted for. So it isn't like in this fall, we're going to change things, but let's lend our voice to this. I think it's important. The other thing is the new job description for the Director of Equity and Student Services. Hopefully, I got that right, doing it off the top of my head. I really encourage the board, if you're not comfortable with the job description that has been graciously shared out for us, take some time. It can be referred back to a committee, it can go to a task force. We don't have to take action on it tonight if we haven't come together to make sure that this is complete, that it does what we want, that this position supports the mission of our school. So I would encourage you to just think about this carefully tonight when you vote on this, or if you choose to take some other option besides a yes or no. All right. Thank you very much. I hope everybody's had a good summer, and I'm excited for school to start back up again.
Would anyone else like to make a public comment? Please.
Hi. Val Drury, Skipback Township. I wanted to thank the, also Judy Lofton. I wanted to recognize her for all the work that she did with PV Woods and the research and pulling things together, so I just wanted to take a moment to recognize her. With regard to the Supervisor of Equity and Student Services, the job description feels very hodgepodge in responsibilities. I can understand why the new groups seem to be added, but it just seems like a lot, and it seems too broad, and I'm concerned that those marginalized groups of Black and Brown and LGBTQ students are going to get lost in this muddy description. And I'm also curious as to where did the work go from the task force for Policy 832 that we did with Mr. Willis? And we would meet. So I'm just asking where, we came up with a lot of great ideas, he had great instruction. I didn't know if that work was moving forward with actual, not so much the writing of the policy, but enacting the policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make a public comment? Okay. On August 7th, we had reports and presentations from our new student liaison reps, president's report, superintendent report. Do you have anything to add?
I do not.
Mr. Sulcer, do you have anything to add?
I do not.
Okay. Any board members have any district and committee reports they want to add? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, looking for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Is we have any objection? Seeing none, motion is approved, the consent agenda is approved, and we'll move on to education. Mr. Felton.
And now we'll turn it over to Dr. Smith. Do you have anything to add?
I don't have anything to add this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Then, item number four, zero two.
Thank you very much. Business, Ms. Emers, are you up and operational?
I have the agenda in print form.
Okay.
Does that work for you?
It works for you.
It does. 501, I don't think, Mr. Weaver, do you have anything to add?
We do have some additional items a little bit farther on in the agenda, but nothing to speak of at this point.
Okay. Thank you. 502, 503, 504, 505, 506, 507, 508, 509, 510, 511, 512 are all on consent, which brings us to 513, and this is a motion to approve the architectural services as provided, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second discussion. I'll start off. So I sent a bunch of questions, trying to understand, let's assume that we do go forth with district office updates at 17 million or 22 million, trying to understand where that loads our debt service currently, what our debt service will look like without the upgrades, what our debt service will look like with the upgrades, and Mr. Weaver, not to put you on the spot, but would you be able to summarize what the back and forth has happened since the previous meeting in a more financial set?
Sure. So Mr. Saylor and Mrs. Emers sent emails in regards to this, and we kind of hashed it out. We went back to Jamie Doyle to review what the impact would be for a 17 million and a $22 million add-on bond issue in addition to our current debt load. As you know, we run a level debt. That debt is due, will be completely off our books by 2033 as it currently stands, and the question was to work our way through to find out what it is exactly that adder would be for that particular, for those two items. Essentially, looking at the attachment in clear columns, which we could certainly share with the school board, millage equivalent for a $17.8 million addition would be .37 mills, and the addition for a $22 million bond issue would be a .46 mills. This is a straight-line adder, and I explained that, and there are some other things and various options that we could look at and hash out over time, but the question was, what would be the adder to the millage rate? So that's kind of where we're at, at currently 36-point some odd mills. It would roughly be about a 10% increase for the 17.8 million dollars and somewhere in the neighborhood of a 15% increase on the mill for a 22, straight $22 million bond issue. We do have options such as not replacing positions moving forward. We have a lot of work to do to cull this out, but as far as reporting out to the public and to the board, those are the impacts of those bond issues.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Any other discussion?
I'm wondering, just if we, if we don't move forward, and I apologize, I was just thinking of this tonight, but wondering, what do we see, how do we see us moving forward, or how long would this building be viable if we don't take any action? When would, does the district foresee that we would have to take action? And also, from a safety and security perspective, if we decided to do nothing, is the building, do we feel confident that the building's secure? Would we maybe need to move? And I realize that could be an executive content, but just generally, overall, if we decide to not do anything, are there other installments or works that we need to do to the building?
So there is a lot to that question, and we have talked about different components to that. The board is aware that we've been looking for, instance, for grounds and operations. We are maxed out as far as space goes in that current administration building, which is to nobody's surprise, right? That building was built in 1987. It was one of the original ones that Gorski put in the Iron Run Corporate Center, so I understand, and we've tried to make it look pretty. We've tried to do what we've needed to do to make sure that that building meets our needs. Currently, as Dr. Smith pointed out in the presentation, it's questionable whether or not it meets our needs right now. We have trouble ascertaining spaces during the school year, for instance, for professional development for large groups of places, of our personnel, which is very important as one aspect to it. Our current build-out, with the help of Mike O'Rourke in the first round of this conversation, said that we would need about 31,000 square feet. We are currently sitting at about 16,000 square feet. So just to lay that out, as was provided before, we're at about 200% capacity of where we need to be to operate. So there's inefficiencies with that. There are other options. Can we parse out different departments and put them in different buildings? Sure. You know, we've got to get to that process. It's not going to be clean, it's not going to be efficient. And so, just to answer your question, there are so many things and aspects that go into that question. That would probably take some additional information to get out there, but those are some of the highlights that I would point out. I would say that a building, yeah, we can, we can put rubber bands on it, to be honest with you, as most school districts and municipalities do, because it's a tough sell to get someone, some municipality or school district, to spend taxpayer money on non-educational or non-municipality things. That's a struggle. We all know that. But I, you know, this is not, this is just part of the process, getting the information out there, and we do feel that Mr. O'Rourke has done a really good job to help facilitate what those other options that Dr. Smith outlined last month, where we'd like to go with that. I don't think it hurts. I think it helps us to understand what an ideal situation would look like, understanding that we don't have those kinds of funds sitting around to fund a project like that. It would take a debt issue.
So this is something that we have talked about in the Safety and Operations Meeting for several years running at this point, and this is really the first time last week where we actually saw numbers of what, what that actually would look like. And obviously, this is more of a commercial real estate project, like you said, rather than an education-driven project, obviously, but there needs to be business done in terms of running a school district, and so we need to have a place to do that. So we talked at length about the inefficiencies of the building, the lack of space, the lack of the ability to host and to hold meetings, et cetera, professional development. I know that we did some bathroom renovation, we were able to get those things up and running. We were looking at this process as part of the hiring of Mr. Fabrizio. This was the case study that we actually had him develop and present to us as part of his interview process. So, you know, none of that's new, although these numbers are very large. So I'm curious as to what, in terms of the growth, because I know you look out there. And we do feel that Mr. O'Rourke has done a really good job to help facilitate what those other options that Dr. Smith outlined last month, where we'd like to go with that. I don't think it hurts. I think it helps us to understand what an ideal situation would look like, understanding that we don't have those kinds of funds sitting around to fund a project like that. It would take a debt issue.
So this is something that we have talked about in the Safety and Operations meeting for several years running at this point, and this is really the first time last week where we actually saw numbers of what that actually would look like. And obviously, this is more of a commercial real estate project, like you said, rather than an education-driven project, obviously, but there needs to be business done in terms of running a school district, and so we need to have a place to do that. So we talked at length about the inefficiencies of the building, the lack of space, the lack of the ability to host and to hold meetings, et cetera, professional development. I know that we did some bathroom renovation, we were able to get those things up and running. We were looking at this process as part of the hiring of Mr. Fabrizio. This was the case study that we actually had him develop and present to us as part of his interview process. So, you know, none of that's new, although these numbers are very large. So I'm curious as to what, in terms of the growth, because I know you look at that as well, what's down the pike, Jim, in terms of folks coming in and building happening? If there's any offset to that, to new construction, in terms of additional money that we are not currently recognizing, but we will be recognizing in like maybe a three or five or ten-year plan, so we can start to put some timeline in place to actually accomplish this? And on top of that, all the while, there could be an opportunity of an existing building becoming available for the school district to acquire that would, that isn't available now, but maybe would be available three years from now.
Yeah. Ms. White, I agree with you. There's, again, there are a whole bunch of options and things that we need to vet before we move to that process. You're absolutely right. We tied it in when we hired Mr. Fabrizio, that was a key component, and a real decider of where we thought the individuals were. We selected Mr. Fabrizio, and he's been on the hunt. He has really been doing a good job of reminding, hey Weaver, there's a for-sale sign down the street. And so we call and we find out what those dollars are, and we don't know, we share those things because, you know, we need to develop the whole package. One of those offsets would be perhaps the selling of the current building to help offset that cost. We don't know that. Another thing that we're looking at is alternative revenue sources for a potentially larger building than what we would need to help bring a revenue stream in. That could be a, some sort of an in-house charter school. That could be something like we've had in the past, New Beginnings, that was, that used to be run out of the trap building. These were revenue generators that helped to offset those ongoing costs. Again, it's to develop the whole picture will take some time. I agree with you.
So I guess the follow-up to that is, you know, this is not approving any type of construction project for seventeen or twenty-two million. This is really just for the study that's associated with it. So I guess my ask would be that in addition to this ask of the seventy-five hundred dollars, to me, immediate responses need to be addressed as part of that to work with what we have. And I think security in that building is paramount, and so I think that that really, that can't fall by the wayside. So just so I understand, the ask, you are recommending that we go forward with this just so we have a baseline to be able to plan for the future?
Yes. That would be the recommendation from the administration, yes.
Any other discussions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nay. The ayes have it.
Five fourteen is on consent. Five fifteen, the Skipback Township easement agreement. The motion is to approve the easement agreement with Skipback Township, and I so move.
Is there a second? Discussions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. And the ayes have it.
Five sixteen was approval of advertising sponsorships. The request to approve advertising sponsorships to be displayed on the new LED Thomas J. Keenan Stadium scoreboard. And...
Mrs. Mares?
That's just information, correct? Oh, sorry, I have a, I'm working from a hard copy that's not...
Yeah, Mrs. Mares, if we could, we're wondering...
I see that, yep.
Yeah. Administration would like to ask the board if they would consider tabling this motion until next month, as Mr. Weaver continues to gather some of the information.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. Five point one, so five point one six is tabled.
No, hold on one second, I'm sorry.
There was no motion made.
Yeah, I got it.
So five point one oh six is tabled.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, nobody made a motion.
Even though there wasn't a motion made. Five point one oh seven. Five point one seven is the approval of the municipal lease for school police vehicles. The motion to approve a municipal lease for the purchase of school police vehicles, and I so move.
Can I, can I...
Yeah, I want to go back, because there was a, I apologize. I want to go back to the approval for advertising sponsorship, because there was a motion made in a second.
There was a motion.
Yeah, real quickly. So we're just going to go back to that real quick. Is there a mo, there was no second?
I don't think I've finished.
A motion with no second. Okay, I'm just making sure. Thank you.
Okay.
On the item five point one seven, we received the additional information just today. So the motion was modified as it was from what was on the published agenda within twenty-four hours. So just to comply with the Sunshine Law requirements, Sunshine Act requirements, I would request that this motion be worded to amend the motion to amend the agenda and to approve a municipal lease for the purchase of school police vehicles. And the reason again, because you have to state a reason for changing the motion, is that we just received this information, and this is a time-sensitive purchase, so we wanted to be able to take the action tonight. And yes, and since there was additional information now available on the...
So before the, before the motion, we'll open up the floor for a public comment, if there is any. Seeing none. Okay.
Okay. So I have the five point one seven is the motion to amend the agenda and to approve a municipal lease for the purchase of school police vehicles, and I so move.
Discussions?
I just have one question. This is the amount that we're talking here. That was part of what we had already had budgeted and discussed when we passed things before. It's not something in addition, correct?
That is correct, Dr. Camplin. We budgeted one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the purpose of two brand-new vehicles at sixty thousand dollars apiece. Mr. Miller and I have worked our way through, and now for fifty-eight thousand dollars a year, we can get, for three years, we can get those vehicles.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it.
Five point one oh eight is a report on grants and donations. That ends my section.
Thank you very much. Mr. Keenan, payment bills.
All right. Six oh one and six oh two, we're on consent. Six oh three, could we have a motion for ratification, or I have, a motion for ratification of bills and payroll as of July 31st?
Yes, there's a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it.
All right. Six oh four, we have motion, I'm making a motion to approve the treasurer's report and financial statements.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay.
Seven and six.
The ayes have it. So ends your section. Mrs. Mares, professional personnel?
Thank you. Seven point oh one through seven point one one are all on consent. Oops. Seven oh four. Sorry, thank you. Seven point oh four is approval of administrative appointments. It's a placeholder. Okay, we're moving that to September. Thank you. Then seven point oh five to seven point one one are all on consent. Seven point one two is a motion to approve the updated supervisor job description as presented, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Dr. Kohler?
So I apologize, since I was not here last week, and I believe there was some discussion about this, I had some questions about the revised job description, primarily because I have been on various task forces, I guess, six or seven years now, where we spent a lot of time advocating for this position as Mr. Willis was hired for. So I'm a little concerned with the new position. Well, I understand the other duties that were included and why there's a need for that. It just seems like a lot for one position. And I feel like in adding all these other things is, and we're watering down the original purpose. So I guess I'd like to hear from Dr. Russell, Dr. Smith, whoever, you know, how you think one person is going to be able to continue that work of equity and inclusion, and then also take on these other responsibilities.
Well, I'll certainly start, and we did discuss some of this last week. And the concern that you've raised, or the question around how much is in the job and the responsibilities, was raised last week, and it was also raised by at least one administrator. The idea is that we are looking to where students struggle the most, where we have achievement gaps, or where students aren't growing as we would expect. That's within our margin, our historically marginalized groups, or those subgroups that we monitor when we present the data in January, as well as the Ls and some of our economically disadvantaged, which are often a part of historically marginalized, if you look up that phrase, five oh four students and gifted. I think the gifted has raised some questions for several people. The idea was that these are students who often are lacking or missing, or for whom we could do better, to make sure that they reach their potential and are successful. If we backwards map from that outcome, we want student achievement to improve, leadership, teachers, all have to realize diversity. They have to become more aware of the diversity and the differences among us, understand them, and know how to respond to them appropriately. So the idea is that there is a targeting to where we need it for students, while still leading in the areas that all contribute to recognizing students do need equity in our system. So that's some of the thinking. Dr. Smith and I both mentioned last week, we will continue to monitor, as we've done before, if the gifted piece in particular, because that is not always a group of students that's connected to those other groups of students. And I explained the sort of theory of action for that last week. If it's too much, as we've done in the past, we will shift that away. The other students that are called out are ones that typically struggle, for whom there is an achievement gap or there are disparities. Those are the ones we want to focus on and help others to realize how to do the same.
So I really appreciate, Dr. Russell, all of what you just said, and I think what, to me, is the biggest concern is that we had two departures, right? It wasn't just Mr. Willis' departure, it was, it was Ms. Folks' departure, as well as the humanities, curriculum humanities. So I understand that there are, the workload of the curriculum team is something that we really talked a lot about this last year, and I think that with the departure of the humanities curriculum supervisor, to me, a revision of that job description is more appropriate to look at these marginalized groups that you are referring to, because I feel as though redistribution of a work, of that workload, to me, makes a lot of sense. And it's almost as though we need an additional supervisor position created, rather than a revision of the diversity, equity, and inclusion position. And I really came to that thought process after a lot of what you shared between last week and this week. And so to me, I do think there is a need to address exactly everything you've just said, but I don't necessarily understand why it's in this particular position. Because I think that there, I think that there was a burden on the other position as well, and that one hasn't been revised.
Dr. Camplin?
Do you want to go ahead? I mean, I can pause.
It really, there really wasn't a question, but I was going to respond to the comment that we did shift the L responsibilities into the supervisor of equity. And I think if Dr. Smith and I could have our dream team, we would have a supervisor for every core curricular area. And that may come to you in the form of a proposal eventually, but for now, we're working with the resources we have. And again, we did a lot of investigating with other districts, and we learned about just the variety of job descriptions and responsibilities the individuals take on. And we tried to be as targeted and intentional to bring some clarity to the job description where we believed it was lacking, and then also shift out some responsibilities that were in there that were never really assumed by the individual. And they didn't make sense at that first pass, if you will. So this is an effort to really focus on where we think about educational equity. It's with students, and it's those students with the achievement gaps. So I don't disagree. STEM is where it's at with careers. We need students to achieve in the areas of STEM. So we could say this has to happen or be a focus on the part of all curricular area supervisors, which is what we've advocated for. It should be embedded in everything. This individual is the one we are tasking with leading that work, and leading it at a deeper level. That's the idea.
So I can definitely appreciate everything that has been said thus far regarding the DEI position. My concern is where we are as a district with trust and with how our families are feeling within the district. And I think that some of the language being pulled out and is not, it's not making it feel inclusive, so there are certain groups that are not feeling like this job description is going to cover them and support them as well. So you have your persons of color, you have your LGBTQ, you have your groups of marginalized, but yet, when you read it, it sounds like it's more specified to five oh four ADA, IEP types of things versus equity and diversity across all marginalized groups. I would really like to see some of that language put back in so that those groups have that trust and that sense of the district's looking out for me, too, and not ignoring. Because I feel like hearing the families that have come to speak to us week in and week out, and emails that we've gotten, there's a sense of the district doesn't care about this particular, you know, X group. And I think we need to acknowledge that there are some hard feelings in the community, and one way to help with that is to put language in a job supervisor position that deals with equity and inclusion, that looks at all of those groups. Will it be, I mean, you can always miss someone, right? I mean, I'm not saying, but at the same time, we know there's particular groups that have come up here time and time again advocating that they feel like they're not being heard, and they're not being supported within our district. And this is a way to show that we're doing everything we can to support them. It's putting ink to it, and it's making it policy, and, or part of the job description. I just, I feel like Mr. Leggett had mentioned about going back and can we work some of the wording? I just don't know that we're there yet to agree. It's a very, very important position, and I want to make sure that it's worded correctly and that we get the best person for the job, and I'm afraid that we're missing components the way that it stands.
Any other discussion? Ms. Evans-Brockett?
I'm not going to belabor this, because I said a lot last week. I'm angry. I'm very angry about this. As a parent of a minority student, this job description has erased my student, it's erased Rena's students, it's erased Mrs. Sadler's students. This is a slap in the face to them. We've spent years trying to move this district forward, and we finally took some good steps. And this job description erasing, I mean, the fact that we couldn't even agree to add in those marginalized groups that were left out, that, I mean, that, I know you knew I was angry last week, but the fact that you came back and said, nope, this is good, just the way it is, that is a slap in the face to every minority student in this district. And I know this is going to pass along party lines tonight, but I just need you to know that as a parent of a minority student, you have erased my child.
I'm just going to make a general discussion point, that I don't think this erases anybody. My child has gone to three years in middle school, and once he had a look at pictures of Adolf Hitler in the bathroom, and another year he had a look at Swastikas in the bathroom. And I don't think this erases a minority student, a non-minority student, I don't think this erases anyone, and I think comments like that are abhorrent.
Any other discussions? Mr. Keenan?
We treat every student equally, and to call out any group is to discriminate against others. We don't do that. We treat everyone equally, and we give them all an equal opportunity to succeed.
That actually disagrees with that, quite frankly, and we know that historically, there is racism in this country. We know that historically, the LGBTQ population has not had the same rights and offerings as others. We know that women have not had the same rights over countless years and still don't have the same rights as men. So to sit here and say that everyone is treated equally is, that's abhorrent. And we need to recognize implicit biases. That is the purpose of the DEI position. It is why we are advocating... It is why we are advocating so strongly, to make sure that everyone has a voice. It's not about equality. It's about equity and making sure that each person has an opportunity to reach their potential. What is needed for one person to reach their potential is not going to be the same as what is needed for another person. And it comes down to what their story is and what their history is. And quite frankly, a person of color historically has not had the same opportunities to get to where they need to be to reach their potential as someone of another race, particularly that of the Caucasian white race. Whether or not you want to agree with it, history is history. And it's time that we take a stand.
Dr. Kohler?
So, again, I'm not going to belabor the point, but I will say that I doubt that most of you at this table have experienced getting a call from your child's principal saying, I'm sorry, Dr. Kohler, but your child was called a racial slur today. And it's not happened just once or twice or three times. It's happened multiple times. It's one of the reasons I decided to run for this position. And my story is a fraction of what's happened to some of the families in this district. I mean, some of the things we've heard here at the podium are heartbreaking. And so, to say that you're not erasing those stories is incorrect, in my opinion.
Why do you assume someone at this table wouldn't have that same experience?
I didn't say that nobody did. I said, I assume most of you haven't. And if I'm wrong, then we should really be talking about this even more.
Any other discussion? Ms. Mayers?
So, I also, I mean, have been involved in this work for years, and it is something near and dear to my heart. And when, there was a lot of talk last week, it raised concerns. And I pulled back up Policy 832, and I looked at the description that administration has put forth, and I actually pored through it to see where we are landing as a district. And what I found is that the purpose of the position that the administration has put forward comes explicitly from Policy 832, word for word, most of it. Out of the 16 points that we're talking about of what we're looking for this person to fulfill in this position, four of them deal with special education, ELD, Title I, and GIEPs. The rest of the 12 points refer specifically to equity. And they, we use the word historically marginalized. We use the words, this again, you know, implement educational equity plan. This again references Policy 832 and everything that that policy tasks this position with fulfilling. So, I was feeling uncomfortable a little bit and concerned. And when I went back and looked, I, to me, I don't see, I feel very comfortable, and I know and trust that our administration is looking at this and has been looking at it. And I believe that this job description continues to move us forward in that way and in a measurable way, in a very firm tasking that we're looking at all students historically marginalized, the different groups that are called out, looking at equity. So, I thank administration for that.
You make a great point with the...
Hold on, I'm going to, Ms. White, ask her.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then, Dr. Campley.
So, I guess because of the amount of time that's been spent on this work, Dr. Russell and Dr. Smith, I am curious as to why the commitment has seemingly strayed from a designated person with authority and oversight over all curriculum supervisors. And I think, to me, and I've said it several times, and it's been reiterated, that this could be a cabinet-level position and completely integrated in all aspects of every decision that's made with regards to the curriculum and instruction throughout all of our buildings. And to allow for the responsibility to fall on that person, because I know, you know, Dr. Russell, you really shouldered most of this work for all of this time. And then, just when we were having somebody in place to actually be able to execute embedding this in the curriculum, it seemed like it's sort of unfurling a little bit, is my perception. And so, you know, to Mr. Saylor's point about the experiences of his child, my child has had similar experiences to that. I think all of us could tell a story along those, some sort of lines of bullying or discrimination. To me, this role is so important. It is more than a supervisor role. It should be a cabinet-level role. And I'm not saying by any means that this supervisor position is not important for the job description as written, but there should be an additional layer to actually oversee and take the burden off of, you know, the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, and actually allow for the curriculum, the heavy, it's hard, uncomfortable work that we've continued to have conversations about these hard, and not everybody is at the same place with it, right? There are folks that literally verbalize that it just doesn't exist, but that's just not a fact, whether or not, wherever you come to it from. Just because you don't feel it doesn't mean that it's not real. So, I think that's kind of why I feel so disheartened by the unraveling of the progress that we've had, is because I really feel like it's that important.
I don't think Dr. Smith and I disagree with you. And I don't know if you've actually done a cross-reference, a crosswalk between the two job descriptions. The initial job description didn't necessarily call out black and brown students by name. Historically marginalized is doing that. Now, just to clarify, too, a supervisor in our org chart is higher than a coordinator, not lower. So, the intent is to actually afford the individual greater authority. Not that that wasn't something that existed or was anything we struggled with in the past, but technically, it is not intended to be a lower-level position in our org chart, not at all. And I, you know, you've mentioned before that you really feel strongly this should be a cabinet position. I don't necessarily disagree, and there may be a time when that's recommended, when we come to you and ask for that. Right now, after the research and the conversations we had, we felt as if this was a position with some intentionality that could still lead in the ways that we expect and that we want as a district and still advance our mission, which is packed full of lots of things to think about and lots of conversations to facilitate and lots of understanding to try and help develop. There's a lot to this. You're absolutely right. Focusing on students was an attempt to focus on equity, where we would see the outcomes, not to take away from some of the other more challenging leadership that has to come as part of that. That's the idea.
Dr. Campley?
I was just saying, the idea of trusting administration, I think it's easier to trust when you're not a person from one of those marginalized groups because you haven't had the same experiences. So, I think representation matters, and that representation isn't just in who we hire and who help make these decisions, but it's also in the wording that we use that says we're going to support those marginalized groups. So, I think in order, again, coming back full circle to that trust, we need to build the language in that's going to help repair a lot of the trust that has been lost within this community. And I 100% think that this should be a cabinet position, and I would hope at some point that that comes back as a recommendation.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Dr. Campley?
No.
Mr. Dorr?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett?
No.
Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Dr. Kohler?
No.
Ms. White?
No.
Mrs. Mayers?
Yes.
Mr. Saylor?
Yes.
Five yes.
7.14 is a new item, the approval of objective performance standards for the assistant superintendent. The motion is to approve objective performance standards for the assistant superintendent, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
7.15 is the motion to approve the objective performance standards for the superintendent, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
That ends my section.
She doesn't have it. Motion to approve the, no, 715 is the, which one?
I thought there was additional.
No, no.
Additional school results.
Yeah.
That's in the next section.
Yeah.
Or no, two sections.
Support personnel, Ms. Evans-Brockett?
801 through 808 are on consent, and I motion to approve items 809 and 810.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion's pass. Thank you very much, Ms. Evans-Brockett. Governance, Ms. White?
901 and 902 are on consent. 903 is a motion to approve the resolution as presented. It's the resolution in support of Senate Bill 180, House Bill 180, so that all kids throughout the state of Pennsylvania can receive the food that they need to be successful in school, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Discussions? Mr. Dorr?
Well, I'm not a huge fan of these resolutions to begin with. I actually do not support this resolution for a number of reasons. Number one, I don't want the taxpayers to be footed with my children's lunch meal. Here it being called a no-brainer, I kind of find disingenuous. I fully support free and reduced lunch. If that program needs to be fixed, I think it needs to be fixed, but I just, I don't think the taxpayers, I mean, it's a new government, it's another government program expanded. I want less government money in life, not more. That's just my opinion, but I'm not sure.
Keenan?
I also support the program for low-income students to have free lunches. I cannot support this bill, though it would benefit me immensely. I just don't believe that it's appropriate to, again, burden the taxpayers with free lunches for those families that, according, you know, that should be able to afford them. And I, you know, on that topic, I appreciate the free breakfast and, you know, but I'm not going to push for that the state give more and more and more. Again, just to reiterate, if there's problems with the program and more students should be having lunch, you know, free lunches, I think that's great. And, I mean, if I got them, I wouldn't refuse them. But again, I'm not going to push for spending more money on this than is necessary to help the students that need it.
Other discussions? Ms. Mayers?
I was wondering if, Dr. Russell, you had a chance to, just to explain what is offered in a free, what constitutes a free breakfast and a free lunch? What items are in there?
I can do that. So, an example of a free breakfast would be a muffin and a cheese stick or whole-grain cereal and a cheese stick, and then a fruit and milk. Sometimes students are offered yogurt and a muffin or whole-grain cereal and a muffin. Sometimes they get a breakfast sandwich or they get whole-grain cereal and a cheese stick. And then, there's a fruit, two fruits with the fruit juice and milk for breakfast. That's what's offered. There are strict guidelines, as you know, although there are some foods that are offered that have raised questions for our principals, and we're working on that with the new director, looking forward to some conversations about how we might change things or recommend changing them. That's one of the goals of moving forward with food service. If you'd like, I can jump to lunch and share with you some examples of what students might be offered for lunch. So, students tend to have five, they get five things in a platter. The entree is two, then they get a vegetable and a fruit, and then their milk. So, an example lunch is French toast and sausage, or it's yogurt bites, or it's pizza as the entree. And then, there's either green beans or baby carrots, there's raisins or peaches, and there's milk. Another day, it might be cheeseburger or peanut butter and jelly sandwich or pizza. And then, we have french fries or broccoli, raisins or applesauce and milk. Chicken nuggets, tacos, hot dogs, grilled cheese, a popcorn chicken bowl, ham and cheese sandwich are some of the other entrees. The vegetables and the fruits are pretty similar. Sometimes there's fresh, there are fresh vegetables with some ranch dip. Sometimes it's cooked vegetables. Sometimes it's orange wedges, and sometimes it's raisins.
So, oh, go ahead. Oh, thank you. So, my comments would be that, you know, this gets us into what would happen on the House or Senate floor. So, if I was on the, if I was a member of the House of Representatives of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, or if I was a senator for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, my number one concern with a bill would be how are we going to ensure that there's not waste? Because OMB for federal programs show that there's over $800 million worth of improper payments at a federal level. From a food perspective, I've heard from two different teachers in two different schools that are concerned about the absolute food waste that happens from the free breakfast program and concerned about with a free breakfast program plus a free lunch program, how they would be concerned with their, the kitchen staff being overworked. In a perfect world, every student would, we would make sure that they have a great meal for breakfast and a great meal for lunch. And I think in Perkman Valley and Dr. Russell, am I wrong if I real quickly say if a student goes to the lunch counter and says, I have no money, I'm hungry, are they being fed?
They are being, yes, they are being fed. They get a lunch, but, yeah.
So, yeah, go ahead. No, you got to butt.
That's right, you finish, and then I'm going to...
No, I have a lot.
...of administration.
Go, go ahead. Oh, on behalf of administration, that's fine. So, my concern is that we need to do a better job, the Commonwealth needs to do a better job, making sure that schools have adequate funding. I would have loved to seen a resolution in favor of the past scholarship program because we are not a low-income district like there are low-income districts. I grew up in a low-income district, and a past scholarship program, which would have been great for someone like myself, but we didn't have a resolution like that. We don't have a resolution that helps our seniors who can't afford school taxes, help give more rebates, and we don't, we don't get involved in those types of issues. We're going to get involved in the issue of feeding our students in a program that's fraught with waste. I would not want to feed someone lunch while they drop their kid off in a Mercedes-Benz and they live in a million-dollar property. That's just not what I think is appropriate funds. Does it help the school budget? Yes, but you're being taxed somewhere else. Uncle Sam's in there either way. That dollar is taxed a lot. It doesn't come up to a dollar once you're done. You earn the dollar, and then it goes to various ways. So, I'm against this just because of the program, the resolution, I don't think is worded properly, and the program is just full of waste. It's wasteful spending, improper spending, and I think we should be advocating for our members of our House of Representatives and our members of our Senate to do a much better job funding public education in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, much better job ensuring that if school districts have students who cannot have food insecurities, that they're making sure that they're being reimbursed for their expenditures so that they don't need blanket statements. Blanket statements, to me, suck. What the House of Representatives and Senate should be doing is very simply telling the school district, any student who should, who can't afford food, we will pay for that. And so, that means they're going to get their free breakfast and their free lunch, and if we have to move forward to having free dinner, we'll pay for that, too, if they can't afford it. But I don't want to pay for someone making a million dollars to... But I don't want to pay for someone making a million dollars to have their kid have a free breakfast and a free lunch. And I worry about the nutritional value and I worry about the secondary and tertiary meals that kids get. We saw during COVID, kids got heavier in this country. They didn't get lighter. And so I will worry about those things. I would advocate for doing more as a school board to making sure students in PV are fed. Whatever we need to do, if we need to pass budget line, I'm interested in that internally, I'm in favor for that. No one should not be fed, but I'm not in favor of a statewide resolution. The state stinks right now, and I don't want to help them do anything.
Um, can I? So, I'm gonna try and tap myself down a little bit here. The idea of hungry children is so upsetting to me. We know Maslow's hierarchy of needs, that if a student's basic needs are not met, they are not in a position to learn. As a school board member, we, our job is to make sure that students are ready and willing to learn. And if there's a proposal out there that will help support them, our job is not to be in the politics of what's happening up at the state level as far as where it's coming from. It's just advocating for the kids. And then once we advocate for the kids, that's where the people who get paid the big bucks sit there and they try and they hash it out and they figure out where it's coming from. But I'm telling you right now, there's a problem in this country with where the bottom line is as to who gets approved for free and reduced lunch and who actually needs it. And I'll tell you a very personal story. I was in a car accident. I was out of work for three years. I couldn't even get WIC for my daughter because my husband made too much. We were a two-income family that went down to one with a mortgage and a car. You never know what someone is experiencing. You don't know. They may have a nice house, but it might be all they can do to keep it because that one parent just lost a job and they don't meet the requirements to get the help they need. You have no idea what these kids, are they gaining weight? What are they eating at home? Do you know how expensive it is to go and buy vegetables and be able to actually feed a family with actual nutritious meals? If there's a way that we can ensure that these kids are getting hot breakfasts and lunches so that their nutritional needs are met, is there going to be waste? There's waste whether we feed them or their parents feed them. There's going to be waste. That's a whole different issue. The issue is, are, is there equal opportunity for these kids to eat? And to say that we're not going to advocate that every child has an opportunity to eat is just absolutely disgusting to me.
I have a lot of thoughts, and they're all jumbled, so I'm going to hope that it makes sense. So, being intimately involved with a volunteer program that is completely supported and held up by our community for the families that many and most don't qualify for free and reduced lunch, so they can eat on the weekends and eat over the summer. I don't understand being part of a community that does not want to hold up the least among us. And I don't understand the idea that allowing those of means to also have free lunch somehow detracts from the larger picture and motivation of a program like this, regardless of where in our taxes we pay for it. I take my obligation and my responsibility as a school board director very seriously. And I feel as though it is my responsibility to advocate and signal to our state what our community needs to be successful, thrive, and go out into the world. And to not allow for that based on some sort of principle that you don't like the way things are or that one thing is broken. You don't throw out the baby with the bathwater. You make incremental steps and improvements to allow for the least among us to be successful. I had a conversation with a parent who said that although they had had the benefit of taking advantage of the free lunches over COVID and they needed the help of power packs from our district in the past, they are, they are now in a position that they don't need that. But then that help would afford them the ability to donate and volunteer more because of the relief they would feel through a program like this. So the idea that someone would just keep taking and taking and taking out of selfishness or their own benefit is, is the opposite of what we should all be living every day. And for there to not be a consensus universally, not even on the state level, but on a national level, that in this country, we are not affording all of our families the same, to me is, it's unconscionable. And I just, I I'm relieved that those that are not in favor of it actually spoke up for once and said that they're not in favor of it because to me, it, it tells a story of, of differences among us.
Yeah, it tells a story that communities work better than the federal government and that the federal government nationally has millions, hundreds of billion dollars of waste. And they virtue signal by saying, look, we did this. But then when O M B gets into the numbers, they see that it's wasteful. But when you get community like power packs and other organizations, they work tremendously to make sure that the students are fed. And as I mentioned before, I'm not against making sure students who need, get it, breakfast, lunch, and dinner. But I'm not for federal wasting just to feel good.
So, Mrs. White, I agree with you. This should be something that's looked at incrementally. This is not incrementally. If the system isn't working, the system is broken or there's problems with it, we need to look at fixing that system. This is going from, you know, where we were, way above that. So, I mean, I agree with you. It should be fixed incrementally.
Mr. Door, you and I are not in the Senate or the House. We are here for free, and you and I both know that. And so all this is doing is telling them what they should be doing to do their job.
You can, as a board member, go ahead and write.
Dr. Russell, how many school districts are there in the Commonwealth?
501.
How many signed this resolution?
I don't know that. They send it to their state reps. I don't know that we can, we can even get the information. So if I could, Mr. Saylor, I'd like to speak on behalf of administration because we've gotten, we've gathered some information here. We've learned from our nurses, some of their views and the concerns that they have had with students taking an extra meal, particularly breakfast, and the waste. We put a measure in place last year where parents could opt out of their child getting a free meal if they wanted to because not everybody subscribes to the free meals when they're available. They don't all do it. They don't all like the food. Some have the means to bring their own lunches, and that's what they do. We talked to individuals working in the field, food and nutrition. They very much support this primarily because of the stigma it can leave students with. In talking to our principals, they too very much support this. Not only because we're not capturing everybody in our net who might qualify for free and reduced or we just miss them because their salary, their income isn't low enough. They tend to get themselves into some situations that can be very challenging. In addition, at the high school level, there are concerns around theft of food. And one explanation or possible explanation for that is that students don't have the funds to afford the food. So in the minds of our administrative team, it's not the students' fault that the government might be failing us. So they shouldn't be left to suffer. Not everyone will take this because it's offered. And as an administrative team, we are in support of it. And I also wanted to share with you in talking with Dr. Smith about economically disadvantaged percentages of low income, Schwanxville is up to about 37%. It has increased dramatically. Once it hits 40, it's a school-wide qualifying Title I school. So the restrictions about how you can spend the money really relax quite a bit. On average, our district is now at 22% when, for, for many years, we were well below 20. So in recent years, there has been a need demonstrated to us on the part of our families. And these data help us to know that. So while free lunch might not be the answer or the best way to use the money, right now, it's an opportunity to support the kids that need it. And it's not their fault that it's not the best way to use the money. So we're advocating and supporting for this for the students in the district.
I just, the other point, because I'm just, again. Last week, Dr. Russell, there was the important slide, I think it was on Dr. Smith's report. We are now not a three Title I school district. We are a four Title I school district.
That's correct.
So just because an average income of our district, for example, may be over $100,000, there are enough families to allow for more than half of our schools to qualify for Title I services.
That's correct.
And we're not going to support the bill that would maybe relieve some of the pain. That's, that's rhetorical.
The, the other, the other point that I want to make is around the waste because this was a concern for me too. There were concerns from some of our nurses that some of the food gets wasted. And I believe we can put measures in place to help curb that. We can educate, we can monitor, we can turn things into teachable moments if we need to. But I think we can work on that. How we communicate and market this opportunity to our parents is also really important. We gave them an opportunity last year to opt out if they wanted to. And some parents subscribe to that. They took advantage of it. So when their students may have punched in a code, they were denied that because they had something already or they had a lunch. So we'll work on the waste also.
So in this line here, it says, whereas if the state passed and implemented Pennsylvania, blah, 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 it would provide $837,844 that could be used to return to the local economy. That's based off of $22.75 per week. So that's paying for breakfast and lunch, correct? That's what the resolution says, but we don't pay for breakfast anymore. So the resolution is giving a higher number. So it's showing that we would save, well, we would give back to the community $814,000. That includes breakfast and lunch. We don't pay for breakfast at Perkman Valley. It's free already, correct? Federal government came through and did that. Mr. Weaver, is that correct?
Yes.
But the resolution says that we do pay for breakfast because it says, hey, if this passes, we don't have to pay $22.75 per week, even though we don't pay $22.75 per week.
At the time I asked for this resolution to be included, there was no budget. So there was not a free breakfast at that time. So i- if you would like to amend the resolution in order for you to support it, I, I support you doing that. I think the general idea of the resolution still stands.
And technically, the resolution's just the resolution. Now, therefore, be it resolved.
Correct.
Not the whereas.
Correct.
Mrs. Mayers?
And I appreciate, Dr. Russell, you sharing that the, the principal's viewpoint because that wasn't something that was shared before an administration. We had information shared with the new food service position people, interviewees, might be interested in supporting. So that's very helpful. So I appreciate that.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Ayes have it? Well, we'll do a roll call since some people.
Dr. Cample?
Aye.
Mr. Door?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett?
Yes.
Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Nay.
Dr. Kohler?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayers?
Yes.
Mr. Saylor?
No.
Ayes, six.
Perfect. I will gladly sign it.
Comments from the audience? Seeing none, yep. Go ahead.
Hi, Trina Sadler. Let's get back township. Um, Dr. Russell, I want to thank you for, as far as the, the role, moving it to a supervisor position. I thank you for making it, taking it higher in the hierarchy. I really appreciate that. Mr. Moran, I would like to be on the interview committee for this position. Now that the job description has been approved, I assume that it'll be posted soon. So I'm putting on the record that I would like to be one of the stakeholder parents involved in the interview process for this new role, please. It's on tape, it's on video, so I expect for you to make sure I'm at the interviews, okay? Okay? Thank you so much.
Again, any other discussion? Seeing none, comments from any board members? Would any board members like to make a comment? Seeing none, 10.03 is a notice of video recording. And with that, I will mention that we had an executive meeting prior to the business meeting for the purpose of legal and rule adjournment.